Good evening. I would like to call to order the December 4th, 2019 school committee meeting. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to enter executive session for the continued discussions relative to collective bargaining agreements and/or ongoing litigation. The school committee will reconvene in open session at 7:00. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. This requires a roll call vote. Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. We will reconvene approximately 7:00 PM. Thank you. I would like to welcome you all to the December 4th, 2019 regular school committee meeting. The December 4th school committee meeting will be televised and recorded under the open meeting law. The public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please identify himself or herself. Seeing none, I would like to ask our student representative, Mr. Jack Stadman, to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as the Father is.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Stadman. I'd like to now turn to Superintendent Malone for our recognition this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have some outstanding students and staff members and community reps here tonight to talk to us a little bit about the achievements of the SAD organization. But a lot of this was brought to our attention by one of our own school committee members, Mr. John Stadman. And I'd like Mr. Stadman to introduce them, if you would, please.
Sure. Quick, get the group from SAD up here. I know we're...I know there is a small presentation you guys would like to do for us.
What do you want him to do?
So last year, our SAD chapter decided to work with the police department to create this mural depicting some of those problems we had inside. So what we did, we divided it into different sectors. We divided the cultures. So over here, we have healthier moms. We wanted to create a more positive and on the very remarkable things we hear and we do everything. We have this over in the corner, which shows anti-homing. Down here, we wanted to talk about the importance of safe driving. In the corner, we talked about alcohol abuse, but also the amount of teenagers who don't do alcohol, which is very important to remember. And our whole theme as a SAD chapter is mind over matter because you can accomplish anything you set your mind to. And with that, we'd like to present a poem to you all today. And this poem is about alcohol abuse, but we want to show you what it's worth.
On April 23rd, 2019, at approximately 21, I responded to more vehicle crimes, car crashes, road accidents, and several other accidents.
I can't believe this is happening to me. My core world is crumbling. I'm cracking in my head. I can't believe this is happening to me. I'm only 16, and my best friend locked behind a very thick door when I got out of the car.
I was only 19, a college student. There was so much for me to do. The only bar I could ever see with a monkey bar was a plane ride.
Upon arrival, I observed twenty fifteen feet of highway, then a stretch of pedestrian and traffic. Then a stretch of morbid rain, with a dash of driving and suddenly crash.
They told me to keep driving, but they were not driving. They said it won't happen to you. I can't believe this is happening to me. I gave you struggles, but they don't do that. I think it would make a difference. You started it, but after this shit.
There was no warning signal, so I stopped the traffic. I made a mistake on my turn. It was never completed.
Perhaps I was too lazy.
It was never completed.
Perhaps I thought I had control.
My parents were home, and it was the first time I've ever seen her with a wine. And when you go home that night, I was already falling asleep, thinking you'd get super chain.
Keep your eyes on the ball, I just couldn't. But I never stopped coming.
As the MP supports the legal, I was like sixteen-year-old female. I'd stopped the odor of alcohol and burned it. And then from her lips, I think I passed her through the sobriety test.
It all corrupted. I got traffic. I ruined my life completely. And it didn't wrong you. It didn't wrong your mind. I deserve everything else in the world. I just can't believe when you knew your name, when you become a detective. You're not a changed person. You've changed people. I've always been afraid you're asking for love, of course. My head had thought that bad things would be this godly thing.
The operator failed all three tests and was taken into custody.
There was so much I could have done.
Our point in presenting this poem is to not show you a loss of hope, but to prove a new understanding our generation has. We have learned it can happen to us, that the statistics of bad things can happen to us. But we've accepted that. So rather than a lack of understanding, our way to struggle to realize that cases like these are not daily news stories. The media and stories we hear now miss the tragedy. Therefore, we should start educating early so students grow up knowing how to cope with the changing worlds around us. We need to teach the next generation that it's okay to not be okay and not restrain struggle as a part of life. We were not born to struggle. Thank you.
Lilly, could I just ask that you bring your group right up here? I think Mr. Stadman has a presentation for you guys. And...
Mr. Regario, please come up here. Right up here.
Come on, you're all team.
Come on up. All right. So, let's have a resolution for you guys for all your work. So, big list. So, whereas, I'm going to name just your first names. Whereas, Anisha, Lilly, Ewin, Sarah, Gianna, Sarah, Clea, Trea, Michael, Liam, Tierney, AJ, Trevor, Tyler, Isabella, Kira, and Abby. Anyone I missed? Perfect. Okay. Members of the 2019-2020 Tewksbury Memorial High School, SAD otherwise known as Students Against Destructive Decisions Club, and whereas under the supervision of Advisor Andy Belesky, and each of the above are contributing members of SAD, and whereas, Maria Mergerio, Program Director of the Substance Abuse Prevention Collaborative, has been working diligently with the club, and whereas SAD members successfully organized and ran a town hall meeting with local representatives, school and town officials, and members of the community to address destructive decisions with a specific focus on underage drinking, and whereas the members continue to advocate for positive choices among their peers, and whereas members of SAD have distinguished themselves as excellent students and members of the student body who uphold the ideals and values of TMHS, and whereas the members of SAD have brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to themselves, their parents and families, and Tewksbury Memorial High School and the Tewksbury, Town of Tewksbury. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the outstanding achievements of the Students Against Destructive Decisions. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much for all your work.
Good one, buddy. That was great.
Awesome. Thank you.
Lilly, great job.
Thank you.
Great job.
Great job.
Good job.
Good job. It's important work.
Good job. Good job.
Excellent job.
Appreciate it.
That was great.
Congratulations.
I would just like to make a quick comment to all the students before they leave, and Maria and Andrew as well. I can't tell you how important this work is. In my previous life, I worked at the Middlesex Sheriff's Office for 20 years. That's prison, where ultimately, if you make enough bad decisions, you end up...I've seen a lot of lives ruined. So, this is great work. It was important to us. It was important to John. Glad he brought you guys in here. But it's most important for the students and your peers that you're with, that you lead that example, that you say it's okay, that I'm going to be different, and I'm going to make a difference. So, I applaud you guys. Great job. I applaud you guys. Great job.
You said it all.
You said it all.
Thank you very much.
Don't end up where he used to supervise.
Yeah.
All right. Moving along to the citizens forum. Is there anyone in the audience tonight wishing to speak on any agenda item? Seeing none, we're going to move along to the approval of the minutes. And I'd ask Mrs. Demos to do that, please.
I move to approve the minutes of the meeting of November 13th, 2019.
So moved. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the November 13th meeting, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. See unanimous vote. I'm going to go to Mrs. Demos for the submission of payment and bills.
I move the school department payroll for the period ending November 14th, 2019, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of $1,485,985.98.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending November 14th, 2019. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. That's a unanimous vote. And to Mrs. Demos one last time for the November 27th payroll.
I move the school department payroll for the period ending November 27th, 2019, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of $1,359,563.73.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll ending November 27th. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. Unanimous vote. My apologies, Mr. Stadman. I would now like to turn to you for student representative report.
No worries. First on the docket, we've got the Tewksbury Red Men. They recently won their Thanksgiving game against Wilmington. Congrats on the team for a great season. The yearbook price is still $70, so they urge you to buy their yearbook, or the price will continue to climb. The TMHS Drama Company has announced that their next show will be named Almost Maine. It's a great show. Auditions will be soon. DECA put on a very successful fashion show, and DECA members are now getting ready for their annual competition, which they will compete in categories to win scholarship money. The Morning Update Crew urges all teachers and students to turn in, tune in every morning for their daily updates on school events. Student Council has started planning for their annual MASC conference. Members of the Tewksbury Tribune went to Boston to see other works of journalism and work how to improve their work as well. The Adaptive Ski Team has now started to plan for their annual ski trip now that snow is available. And winter tracks started this afternoon, and I wish them luck out in the cold. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stadman. Moving on to the superintendent and staff reports, I'd like to turn over to Superintendent Malone, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick update on a few items. One would be the significant news that the Student Opportunity Act was approved by the governor and is going into legislation. However, defining what that means for Tewksbury is still a little bit of a puzzle. DESE and the Superintendent Association are doing some extrapolations on what they think that may mean. Again, the priority of this bill was to look at the funding mechanism to largely support urban districts as they were underfunded due to the economic disadvantage calculation. We're not sure what kind of impact this will have for us. We're hoping that it's going to be positive. There is some aspects in this legislation, particularly the allowance to identify special education transportation being reimbursable for a circuit breaker is certainly a piece that we see helpful. But again, I would just, you know, guard in the news that this has gone through because all of this is subject to appropriation each year, and circuit breaker itself is subject to appropriation each year, what percentage that will come back. So, we're hoping that this will turn into positive news as far as a funding mechanism for the district, but the details remain to be seen. So, we'll keep the committee and the community informed of where we're at with that. Great week last week for Tewksbury Public Schools. Had American Education Week. All of our schools had parent visits into the classroom, and some exceptional activities throughout the week. It's just a great opportunity for our parents and community members to come in and see the education live, see the students learning. Great job by our administrators and teaching staff who certainly made sure that our visitors saw great examples of our outstanding instruction. The MCAS dates have been posted and mailed home to parents. This is a valuable document for parents for planning purposes. Certainly, those are dates within the calendar, the testing dates that we'd want to make sure we honor, making sure students are attending school. We just finished up our 2019 recognition celebration in the auditorium prior to this meeting, and we know that, you know, MCAS testing is a year-long event. It is not a one-time test. It's an actual measuring stick of the quality of our curriculum, the quality of our instruction, the quality of support we give to students and staff. So, it's a big piece on that, and it is a year-long endeavor. So, we want to make sure our parents are aware of what those dates are so that they can ensure that they're doing proper planning. Also, Ms. Reagan was not able to join us this evening. She is at the Case Title I Conference. The good news is she's in a beautiful beach area. The bad news is it's in Massachusetts, so it's snowy and cold. But she is there with Principal Whitstone, Principal Guinness, and Principal Vogel. And this is an outstanding conference. It highlights instructional practices that improve student learning. We have gained a lot from sending some of our administrators and teaching staff to this conference over the years. We can bring back best practices and look at how we can best support our teachers in the classroom to continually improve instruction. So, we're looking forward to what elements she'll bring back next month and report back to the committee on some of those pieces. A huge thank you to our maintenance foreman, Mr. John Marshon, our maintenance staff, our building custodians, our administrators that were in here on Monday, all of our staff that worked so hard to clear the snow, make these schools safe, so that we could open today. But the work that goes unseen Sunday night, Monday, Tuesday night, all throughout, many of our staff members are on minimal sleep, and they worked hard. And in one element of pride, I would say, is that usually our schools are cleared and cleaned before the roads are in town. So, that's how hard they work and how much work they put in. Also, just a reminder to parents and the community, no school calls because of weather typically occur in the early morning hours. Because of the track of this storm and some other issues that we were aware of, of the conditions of the roads and some other things, we were able to make a call Sunday night and Monday night this week. That is not the norm. The norm is typically, we try to get the most up-to-date information. We talk directly to DPW. We talk directly to the police on the road. And typically, those decisions are made in the early morning hours. Just the way this storm laid itself out, it made sense for us making calls at that time. But I would just guard people about thinking that calls on no school are made the night before. With that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Libby.
Okay. Excuse me, just one second, Mr. Malone. Just to add, because I know we all get a lot of calls, and sometimes it's often assumed and not said, but we call school off due to safety, right?
Absolutely. And there's multiple factors that we check on that. And we check with surrounding communities. We actually know the salt level that's being poured on the roads, the pretreatment that's going on the roads, what the conditions of our sidewalks are, what the conditions of our bus pickup locations are. And that's not to say even today, those locations are perfect, but we know they're safe enough to have school, and that's the determination that we make.
Great. Just wanted the public to understand that. Sometimes that gets lost on them, so thank you for that. Mr. Libby, please.
Good evening. Just a quick update on what's going on in our business office. We'll be conducting budget meetings next week with our school principals and department heads. Focus for them on changes they see coming into their buildings or their areas for next year. We try to have this process be a fluid process now as we go forward into budget season. We're required to provide the town with a preliminary budget January 10th, which is creeping up on us here very quickly. So, we'll be doing some budget presentations in January to show where we're at with that process. One big completed capital project I'd like to just let you guys know about is our Heathbrook Boiler Room. Not a place where it's going to draw a lot of attention, but know that way more efficient than the old system we had. It now has a system we can shut down in the summertime and still have hot water for the domestic bathrooms and places where people need to go to wash their hands. And we can shut down the main heating system for the school and still have hot water in the school in the summertime. That's a big plus. And this is all done with in cooperation with the town, our Green Committee, and some grant funding and rebates that are available to us. So, took advantage of that, and that project's complete, and Heathbrook's nice and warm.
Great.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Libby. Moving on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions regarding the consent agenda this evening?
No.
I had one note when I was reading through this over the week. I noticed that there's a new fundraiser in town. We tend to go back to fundraisers that we know have been successful in things. And I see that in the spring, we're going to be having a fundraiser for the Heathbrook and the Treyhand. That is the Pure Vida bracelets that are the Tewksbury colors. I think this is an example of a new, fresh idea that I think, being a mother of two girls, I know that Pure Vida is pretty popular right now. I think that I'd be curious to see how this goes. And I just want to say kudos for thinking out of the box out there. You know, I think it's a great, a great attempt, and be curious to see how it goes.
I agree. Thank you very much. Anyone like to make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. Moving on to the committee reports, and we'll start with Mr. Cutlass, please.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Chair. The Elementary School Building Committee, we've been meeting regularly. They're designing the project in conjunction with our administration and the staff. They're going to make a big presentation to the MSBA at the end of December, where they're 60% done with that project. They've also been going before, Planning Board and Conservation, seeking their approvals for the project, and that's going well. In January, I believe, you'll start to see some activity at the Ryan School Site when the contractor's going to take it over and fence it off and create their own driveway there. So, things are happening very well, and it's going forward in a positive way.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Cutlass. Moving on to the Tewksbury Education Foundation, Mrs. Demos.
I have nothing to report to me.
Okay. The Tewksbury CPAC, just a brief update. I met yesterday with the CPAC, and the district is actually going to be doing a presentation at their next meeting on January 16th, which is usually right here in LG1, regarding the programming that is going on in the district for special education. With that, I'd like to thank Mr. Stadman again for that excellent presentation and bringing those students in. If you have anything to add to your wellness update, it would be appreciated. If not, I would certainly understand.
It's just, we had a meeting. Again, there was just some stressing about some stress about ongoing vaccinations and public outreach going on with, you know, the wellness. And then there's also going to be an outreach to this board as well. We're going to continue to go through that. Meeting date's going to continue out through March, and the public's invited to join us in this room at March 16th, as well as May 18th, in this room at 3:30. Where you can learn more about wellness and how you can be involved in the community. That's my short update.
All right. Great. Thank you, Mr. Stadman. Seeing no policy changes, proposals, or adoptions, I'd like to go on to old business and hope that Mrs. Reagan left you a professional workshop development update for us.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. And with Ms. Reagan not here, I think it's important to talk a little bit about the high-quality professional development that she certainly spearheads within the district. With the upcoming professional development half-day, I think one of the messages you see when you look at that document and the items in which the professional development is being conducted, not only overlays completely on our district vision, but it also encompasses the use of technology. Each one of these require a laptop for staff members to take part in. It is certainly, as Ms. Reagan is now at the case conference right now, some of these elements that we're working on in the district are cutting-edge elements. UBD, Understanding by Design, significant curriculum mapping exercises, significant pieces, and this is all done by experts. And those experts are our teachers. This is teacher-driven. This is elements where teachers are learning from each other. It also overlaps with our PLC development within the district. So, PD is not a separate item. When we look at our PD, we want to make sure it's the message from the district that we want to send. And all of this is geared to improve instruction in the district. And I can't thank Ms. Reagan enough for her lens on this, and her ability to look at the most progressive, the most recent trainers, the most recent ideas. And, you know, I can't say enough also about our staff, who are willing to take some of these pieces on. Some of these elements are new. They're different. It's not easy, if you've been teaching a certain way for 10 or 15 years, to relook at pieces. It's a hard thing to do. But we've gotten some great feedback from staff. I would encourage the committee to come by during some of those PD days and watch our staff in action, work through some of those elements. It's really kind of what we believe is important to our vision. So, all of those elements, particularly around the curriculum mapping, around different aspects of the mathematical instruction, but even down to those areas about how the Delta T aides are being trained in zones of regulations, how the school psychologists are specifying their PD, how the nurses are specifying their PD. It's all geared to one element, and that's to improve instruction in the district. So, great job by Mrs. Reagan, and this should be an outstanding event next week.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Malone. Seeing no business, we'll move on to School Committee Matters of Interest, and I would start with you, Mr. Wilson.
I have nothing to report this night, this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Stadman?
Nothing on my end. Nothing to report. Nothing on my end.
Mr. Cutlass?
I'm well set, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Demos?
I just wanted to remind the community of the upcoming event on December 14th at the Salem Ice Rink in honor of Ryan Driscoll, one of our former Tewksbury students. And I know that we won't be meeting until that actually happens. So, that would be happening, Ryan Driscoll Scholarship Night, December 14th, at the Salem Ice Rink. I just encourage our community to show the support to the Driscoll family.
Absolutely. And also to our reigning Division One Girls' Ice Hockey State Champions.
There we go.
As well. It'd be nice to go out. I think we're playing the, I'm probably going to get in trouble for saying this, but we're playing, I think, the evil empire of Central Catholics. So, I'm sure girls' ice hockey could use all the support that night. So...
There we go.
For updates, the tree lighting ceremony is Friday night at Town Carman. If anyone's interested, that's a great event, 6 to 8. I also wanted to thank all of the students involved in that fashion show. I think it was their 10th year anniversary, and they raised, I think, just over $15,000 for that Megan McCarthy research fund. So, that's fantastic work, and those kids that... So that's fantastic work, and those kids that ran it, that went all the way to the Nationals last year, did, I can tell you, a stellar job. It was, it was a show if you were there, so congratulations to them. I'd like to wish everyone a very happy and Merry Christmas. Obviously, we're not gonna meet until afterwards. Hope everyone has a nice holiday season. And along those lines, the school committee will be going out to celebrate Christmas and the holidays, so we'll be going to Coyotes. We're not going to do business. We're gonna go maybe sing some Christmas carols and have some food. And so if you see us out there, that's all we're doing, so. That's all I have for this evening. Does anyone have any future agenda items? As always, if you do have something, you can send it to myself or Mr. Malone, or if you're out there in the audience or watching at home on TV, you can send something in as well, so. But that being said, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas. Have a Happy New Year, and we'll see you next year. Thank you.